All right. Good evening, everyone. It is 6 o'clock and I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting agenda of the City of Delray Oaks City Council. Today is Tuesday, June 22nd, and it's 6 o'clock. Karen, could you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Donaldson.
Here.
Councilmember Gagliotti.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lintell. You're muted. Mayor Kerr.
Here. Mr. Clark, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Clark? You may be experiencing technical difficulties. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and deliver justice for all. All right. And we have Reverend Helen with us this evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Nice to see you.
Thank you. Shall we pray? Anybody who's willing? Almighty God, thank you for attending this meeting. We do pray for this nation of ours, the United States of America, that you would settle all the unrest and take away all the virus issues, that people may return to their normal lives, open businesses, bring jobs back, help us all to be free and unafraid. And please bless the City of Delray Oaks, all the people attending this meeting. And please may this council meeting please you. And thank you once again for your presence here. I'm in.
Thank you. So now, excuse me?
Mayor, may I say something, please? May I say something? I would like to thank Reverend Helen for being here and tell him how much we missed him and we appreciate his being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Now is time for public comments. Anyone wishing to address the City Council on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. The public may comment on any other matter listed on the agenda at the time the matter is being considered. There will be a time limit of no more than three minutes for each speaker. No action will be taken on matters brought up under this item, and all comments will be referred to staff. So we have a lot of folks with us tonight, so please ensure that you raise your hand via Zoom, and I will call as they come to me. Mr. Alian?
Thank you. I hope you can hear me. This is Dennis Alian at Four Los Encinos Drive in Delray Oaks. At the May City Council meeting, the mayor, you read a resolution proclaiming June Pride Month for the City of Delray Oaks, just as many other local and state, federal governments have done. Deciding to recognize and show respect for this and other commemorations is appropriate as a way to raise public awareness, show support, and reflect the community's moral and social compass. After reading the resolution, the mayor announced that a flag-raising ceremony would be held, but gave no opportunity for public comment. Prior to this meeting, as I understand it, the City Council members were queried individually by the acting city manager, and by consensus, raising the pride flag was approved. I question the transparency of this decision-making process. While it might be permitted under the Brown Act, it failed to seek public input on something that turned out to be fairly sensitive to people. In walking around our city, we found that people to be generally supportive of the resolution and agreeing that the people it represents are deserving of acceptance and recognition for the humiliation and discrimination they may have suffered. However, some people were not aware that there was an additional flag being flown. Some did not care, but many more objected to the less-than-transparent decision-making process used, and thought that the only flags that belonged on the city's primary flagpole should be those that represent all citizens. Those are the government flags, the U.S. California and City Flag. I circulated a petition that got more than 50 citizens to sign on just a few streets in Delray Oaks, and that they all agreed in signing that petition that only the government flag should be flown from the city's primary flagpole. Many suggested that there be a secondary flagpole used to fly banners or flags that honor specific organizations or groups. A few veterans questioned why the city has not been flying the MIA POW flag on the several days recommended. The black-and-white POW MIA flag is a sign of our nation's commitment to account for U.S. personnel still unaccounted for from the Vietnam War. It's recommended that flag be flown immediately below the U.S. Flag on Armed Forces Day and several other days. Our small informal survey demonstrates that there are many people living in our city that think non-government flags should be flown on a separate flagpole, such as at Old City Hall. It is therefore recommended that the City Council discuss and adopt a policy during an open meetings that provides clear direction for staff regarding displaying flags or banners from the city flagpole. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ruth D.
Thanks, Mayor. My name's Ruth Dunham on Wallace Place. I'm a 32-year resident and homeowner in Delray Oaks. I love our little city. I am here tonight to express my vehement opposition to the four-tag TMC frog pond for these six main reasons. There are many reasons. Reasons, but the main six are, first of all, the frogland wetland preserve. The word preserve means to save. Years ago, I went to a meeting at Seaside City Hall. Rich Deal was there showing maps of what would be affected by this plan, and when it went through the frog pond, my friend and I said, "That is not acceptable." And he said, "What part would you accept losing?" And I said, "Not a bit of it. Not a plant, not an animal." So anyway, it's a preserve. Number two, this brings no value to Delray Oaks. They're bringing no tax revenue. It doesn't add commerce. And I say that it will not add to our property values, but detract from them, because I don't think people want people in their frontyard or backyard. Instead, this adds to the city's burdens to patrol and to maintain. This adversely affects many citizens, mainly along Angeles and Carlton, but also those who back up to Plumas and Sausalito. The lights alone will be intrusive to their properties. I think this grant was obtained sort of by false advertising. It was put on there because it would add safer paths for kids to Delray Woods School, when the Delray Woods kids don't even go to that school, would not even use this path. The kids who do attend there have no need for that path. Number five, this was never put to a vote. We were never polled and asked if we wanted this in our front and backyards. And number six, I believe this is this path, this rec trail, is a serious threat to the citizens' security, their safety, their privacy, and their sense of serenity in this wonderful small town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. I see iPad 72 Scott.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, members, Madam Mayor, City Manager Hoynes. My name is Scott Morgan. I live at 942 Angeles Way, right next to the park and the creek, so I'm going to call myself a park and creek expert. Overgrown. No one seems to be listening to that. I'm going to say it again. The creek is overgrown. It needs to be cleaned out from the frogpond to Safeway. I've never seen it so bad. Right now, the park looks very nice, but the greenbelt area next to or paralleling the park is dangerous. It's a fire hazard. There's dead trees, dead branches, all kinds of brush. I see growing up trees that are killing trees. That needs to be cleaned out. There's even a tree across the creek below City Hall. That is a concern and needs to be gone. I'm holding, I sent Mr. Dino Pick back in November of 2019, identifying this problem of the greenbelt area being a fire hazard, and I wanted signs posted, and nothing has ever happened. It needs to be cleaned out. I don't want to be told we're at the mercy of the Gavillon crews. That's just not a good plan. You need to get in there and take care of it. Cleaning it up is not a fun or enjoyable job, but it needs to be done. The road leading to the Garden Center is equally as bad. The creek is overgrown. There's dead fuel there. If there's agents of the city on patrol all the time, why has it gotten so bad? Now we want to have additional people come into our city. It just doesn't make sense. I'm an expert in the creek and the park, remember? So it's a rare occurrence to see a patrol car on my street, not a common occurrence. There's been large parties at the park since reopening of COVID, where people are parking in red zones. The parking lot is full. Cars are blocking the parking lot, and I haven't seen a patrol car there all day. And now we want to increase the amount of people. We want to load the cops up with more work trying to patrol the bike path. It's just not a good idea, and it's not going to work out for us. So I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I see Molly.
Hello. My name is Molly Hotch. Me and my family are relatively new to the Delray Oaks neighborhood. We've been here for about a year now, but I grew up here. My grandparents lived here since the 70s, so I've grown up coming and sort of, yeah, knowing the area well. Ruth that spoke earlier basically brushed on all the topics that I was wanting to speak about. I agree with all of her statements. It's definitely a concern, as she said, to the sort of safety of the residents of Delray Oaks, having young children. It just brings up a lot of concerns. And yeah, just in terms of having a vote of the citizens here, I just feel like we weren't really made aware. I was only really made aware of it about a week ago. So I just feel like there should be some more knowledge and just more of an opportunity for citizens to put their input and just kind of get more involved with it. I just think that would be fair, and I think it seems to me that most people would be opposed to it. So that's really all that I wanted to comment on. But yeah, that's it for me.
Thank you, Molly. Welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Don Gruber.
Hi, I'm Don Gruber. I live on Paloma Road, Delray Oaks. I'm speaking about the proposed four-tag trail. As many of you know, I've been opposed to the trail rather vociferously for a couple of years, not because I don't believe in the benefits of getting people out of cars and onto bikes, but because I believe the negatives of this particular trail outweigh those benefits. That's not for most of the trail as planned, but for the Delray Oaks portion in particular. I don't see any benefit to the residents of Delray Oaks for any part of the trail through Delray Oaks, but the degradation of the frog pond is the part of the plan that's of sufficient importance to me to deny the whole trail. That degradation will be in two parts. This one, the current phase, which will destroy existing habitat by means of a 10-foot trail and retaining walls some about 500 feet in length after it passes through the tunnel and makes its way up to Carlton, and the current plan it is. That's bad enough, but implementing the first phase of the project enables the second, which will traverse the frog pond by one of two possible routes and exit under a 60- or 80-foot bridge on General Jim Moore, where it further damages existing habitat on the other side of Jim Moore. The frog pond plays a big role in setting Delray Oaks apart from the rest of the peninsula. It's a unique wetland, long cherished by animals and persons alike. It's home to frogs, no surprise, and many other critters, to include a great variety of resident and migratory birds. All of these critters will be adversely affected by developing frog pond. Besides native animals and plants, who are the users of frog pond? If you were to go there at most any time of day, it's likely you'll run into many mothers with toddlers, whole groups of them, walking slowly and safely. Babies learning how to walk, held by their mother's hands. There's hikers, there's runners, and there are people ambling with dogs on leash who find a great deal to sniff their left and right. All those people soon have to duck out of the way of speeding bikes, and they will be speeding because a large part of them are electrified, and that means they're regulated to 30 miles an hour. You can do it without pedaling, and they will, because the nature of bicycling is speed, and a certain portion of people will always be going as fast as they can. So I encourage you to find a way to keep this trail out of Delray Oaks, out of the frog pond, and please work for the benefit of the current users of the pond and of Delray Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. I see the letter R.
Hi, my apologies. Couldn't figure out how to change my name. My name's Roberta, and I live in Delray Oaks, and I want to say I am so disappointed in our elected city council members and mayor, as well as city leadership. Despite my years-long opposition to the proposed route of the Delray Oaks segment of four tag, you have ignored us, the residents, and signed the master agreement buried in a 100-page agenda packet, when people in the city were sheltering in place, trying to navigate distance learning with their children, life on Zoom, being furloughed, laid off, worried about their family's health during the pandemic. I oppose this portion of the project and have since 2019, when I first learned about it. I have come to learn that many, many residents in Delray Oaks had no idea about this project or the impact and the footprint it would have on Delray Oaks. No one from the council or city has ever addressed any of my concerns or questions, and still hasn't. The most disappointing part of all of this has been watching my child, who has been studying government in school and has shown interest in the whole process, watching him bear witness to the fact that politicians and people with more power and money will do what they want, regardless of what the people say. You should feel ashamed that the takeaways my child is gleaning from speaking against this project is that despite residents' clear and logical communication, us trying to follow the, quote, "public process," unquote, and reassurances that we are being listened to, the well-funded, well-connected will do as they please. Special interests and people who do not live in the city prevail, voters and residents lose. But he will see how, at the end of all of this, the people will speak with their votes when you're up for reelection. I won't forget how we were ignored, patronized, and otherwise dismissed. It's been really disappointing to go through this whole process and see people say, under the guise, that there has been public outreach, and there have been workshops and such. These workshops are being held when people are at work, so they can't attend. They're being held on formats that people are not used to, like go-to-meeting, and it's been, people have not been able to make comment or access these meetings because of barriers due to technology. And so I urge you to do better and listen to the residents of Delray Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberta. I see Kathy.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I too am here to voice my opposition to this project for many, many reasons.
Kathy, could you please let us know who you are?
Kathy Paolozolo, and I live on Angeles Way.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, I oppose this project for many, many reasons. I'm really disappointed in, I'm going to echo what Rebecca said, Roberta said, I'm not going to go into detail on that. This path was advertised as an alternate mode of transportation. This path will not reduce emissions. This path or trail is disguised as this to get it through. This is nothing more than a recreational trail. There's no benefits to Delray Oaks. I see a lot of harmful impacts on Delray Oaks. One of the speakers before me discussed the issues to the frog pond. We will have an issue with homeless. We are not a fiscally sound city. Now we're taking on additional burdens. We have to maintain this, this path, which I think is ridiculous. I don't understand why our leg is first. Nobody has answered the questions I've had about the city's increased liability in having this. Will our taxes go up? If this path goes through and it is indeed an issue, can we get rid of it? Can it be closed? Can we shut it down during the hours of darkness? Nobody is answering any of our questions. Nobody is allying our fears by telling us how they're going to deal with these problems. I brought up the homeless. This is, this will be a transient superhighway. With the transient population comes trash, crime, violence, drug paraphernalia, hazmat issues, human waste, fire hazards from warming fires. It's expensive on our public safety. It takes our cops out of our city when they have to transport one of these people to jail. We have to pay clearance bills for them to get checked out at a hospital before they go to jail. Nobody is answering these questions. Will we pay more for fire coverage because we're going to have increased population in our city? Again, nobody has talked about the liability issues. I just don't understand it, and I'm going to echo Rebecca. Shame on you, council members. Shame on you, Mayor, for not listening to us and having some sort of agenda that does not benefit the City of Delray Oaks. You care more about outsiders and less about the people that live here. I have lived here for over 30 years. I deserve the neighborhood I moved into, the quiet, peaceful, wonderful, serene neighborhood. I don't want it to change. Shame on you.
Thank you, Kathy. Jeff Sicilio.
Good evening. I wanted to comment on this proposed four-tag TMC rec trail that's planned to go through our neighborhood.
Could you just let us know who you are?
I'm sorry. I'm Jamie Sicilio at 74 Carlton Drive. My apologies.
No worries.
The trail that's going to go through Angeles Way, Carlton Drive, and also this tunnel at 218 and the frog pond. This project is going to drastically change the look, the feel, and the character of Delray Oaks, and it's not for the better. We're a residential community, period. Why are we the only residential community chosen for this trail to be sliced and diced through? The additional traffic congestion, parking issues, car break-ins, the whole environmental damage that's going to happen, the noise, the visual signage obstruction, all of these are legitimate concerns, and they're inevitable, and they need to be better addressed and not simply dismissed with a perfunctory response. And for all of these reasons, I oppose this project. And you are elected representatives. You need to put the brakes on this project and protect Delray Oaks. Alternative routes need to be developed and considered, especially since there's no clear plan or timeline for constructing or connecting the other legs of the trail. Delray Oaks should be the last leg of this trail to find out what happens with the other trails. Are they going to run out of money? How long is this going to last? Otherwise, we're going to be left holding the bag with a trail to nowhere, like Fremont. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrice Akione.
Hi, I'd like to make comments on two different topics. One, I would like to applaud the pride flag. I love seeing it unfurled there, and I was there at the.
Patrice, could you just state for the record your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Patrice Akione, and I live on Sausalito. I am for this trail. I think it is a fabulous idea. I am for it because it gets people outdoors, and we need to be outdoors, appreciating nature, exercising, and the amount of impact to Delray Oaks is nominal. Yes, there will be a trail going behind my house. I live on Sausalito. It'll be going on Carlton. Not my favorite thing, but I also don't see it as a big imposition. The amount that the trail will go into the frog pond in the first phase is nominal. There will be, the ramp going down, it will only cover the southwest corner of the frog pond, and the tunnel, I welcome the tunnel. I find it terribly frightening to cross Carlton, even with the crosswalk, I mean, to cross 218, even with the crosswalk there. It is not safe. So I think this is a great idea. I think we have to be very attentive to make sure that the frog pond, for future phases, the frog pond is protected. That is essential. In this first phase, the frog pond will not be impacted except for the short period of time that it takes to build it. And I look forward to taking walks and to riding my bike from my home. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandon.
Oh, hello?
Yes.
Oh, hi. I'm Brandon Stettens. I lived in Delray Oaks for 30 years. I currently live on Robertson Place. I used to live on Angeles Way. I lived there for four years. I was a daily bicycle commuter for two of those years. I rode my bike to PG every day for work. I found it, the trail that I used on Angeles, it's so wide and perfect. I would hate for that nice wide road to be compromised with any barriers on the sides of Angeles. I don't feel that would be necessary. I've also seen, you know, the bike lane on Carlton, as well as on Fremont Street, and they're, they seem to be failures as far as the placement and design. If anything, you know, study the trails that people use, the routes people use. I would love to see Canyon Del Ray have the bike lanes painted in green, something similar to that we see on Del Monte Boulevard and Seaside. And I've also heard that this trail may remove the tennis courts in Delray Oaks, which I'm an avid tennis player, and you know, I don't understand if it's, if you're creating a recreational trail but removing a tennis court, what are you really benefiting here? That defeats the purpose in some ways to me. And yeah, so this trail, I also, I do worry about the carbon footprint that will happen to the frog pond. Any type of loud construction will destruct, you know, will be disrupted to the habitat there as well. So I am opposed to this four-tag project, and I would love to see it be voted on by the community. I've lived here pretty much my whole life, and I'm as recreational as they can get, and you know, I'd love to offer input, and I feel that that would be so necessary for all of the community of Delray Oaks. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Brandon. Amy Wick.
Hi, I'm Amy Wick. I've lived in Delray Oaks for 30 years. I live on Greenock Place. I'm here to support what Dennis Alian presented about the pride flag. Personally, I believe that marriage is between a man and a woman, and it offends my religious beliefs. And a decision was made about the pride flag by a small number of people. I believe this is a contentious topic, and that more citizens need to be involved in the discussion of whether the pride flag is flown or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wick. Jim, did you have your hand up? I saw it for a minute, and then it... Any other public comment about anything not on the agenda?
Mayor Vicky Lucido has.
Vicky Lucido has her hand up and Phil.
Oh, okay, I'm not seeing that. So, Vicky?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Vicky Lucido. I grew up in Delray Oaks on Robertson Place. And I lived there basically my whole life and then moved away for a little while to go to college. And now I'm back on Sausalito Avenue. I've been there for over 20 years. I've been aware of a proposed recreation trail for a while now, but always thought it was planned to be built on the old Fort Ord. The name Fort Ord Regional Trail in Greenway or Fortag, I thought it meant a Fort Ord trail. So I thought, great. It was only about three weeks ago when I heard that the plan was to build the trail through our residential streets or neighborhoods and wetlands. I'm sure that the city fulfilled their minimum requirements to notify the general public. But I believe that something so life-changing to our neighborhoods and quality of life should have been supported by a comprehensive public relations campaign on the part of our city leaders. In my opinion, there should have been flyers under doormats, dedicated emails, phone calls, even door-to-door visits of maybe. And this should have been done before the initial agreement was signed, not after. To say we don't have the resources for such a campaign is to say that we surely do not have the resources to maintain and manage this trail long after Fortag and Tamsi leave us with the burden of taking care of a trail that benefits more people outside of our city than it does people inside. Since the beginning of June, I've been in touch with over 300 people in Delray Oaks and the overwhelming majority of residents are opposed to this trail. I'm asking the city leaders not to sign the supplemental agreement and give residents a chance, chance to be heard. Why not consider a trail that does not run through neighborhoods, that does not run through wetlands, that does not run through city streets? The residents want to see a plan for how our city will deal with the myriad of issues that this trail will surely bring. Please, no more evasive answers, no more misleading statements, and no more condescending brush-offs. How are we going to pay for what Fortag and Tamsi leaves behind? We have not seen that plan and we deserve to see that plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. Phil? Did Phil have a hand up? Okay, let's move on.
Mary's trying to get unmuted.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Phil White. I'm at 882 Portola Drive. And we've been here for about 13 years. We just love this little community. We really, I just heard about, you know, this trail that's going through and I really don't think it's a good idea. And I just wanted to express my opposition to it. And that's about all I really have.
Thank you, Phil. Jim, I see your hand. Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Interesting. Interesting challenges. Oh, okay. They went to full screen and took my thing away. There we go. Okay. Jim Clark, Villarreal, Delray Oaks. Mayor and elected officials. I had to smile a little bit at the beginning of this meeting. Remember you, when you were the ones in the audience complaining about not being listened to, threatening those council members and the mayor? And that was just three short years ago. Well, I think we all gained some appreciation that it's not so simple. Sitting on that side of the microphone. And while I don't see any reason we cannot be meeting in person, I'd like to put forward that anyone commenting on Zoom, I'd like to suggest should have to have their camera on. 30 months, that's how long it's been since the new mayor has been in the office. 30 opportunities to recognize a national group or cause, even though most of us were quite happy here in Delray Oaks when national politics were not brought into our city council meetings, that like the public comment says, quote, "subject to the jurisdiction of the city and the council." And I had to ask myself several times this month, would I be seeing anything if you chose something else to fly on our one city flight pole? Just to say the American Red Cross or the flag for slavery and human trafficking or a flag about hospice care or foster children? And after much introspection, I'd have to say, yes, I would. The city flag pole is by definition that, the city flag pole. And that means the US flag on top, the California flag if so desired next, and the city flag next. Seaside has several flight poles and is flying the gay pride flag on one of those poles to the side. And just FYI, corporations are allowed to fly their corporate flag beneath the US flag. But again, that's on their personal property. But that is not what really is at the heart of my concern tonight and my public comment tonight. The heart of my concern is, how did this get accomplished? It got accomplished by a backroom, non-transparent, no-public-comment strategy. The very things the mayor and councilwoman Shirley campaigned on and claimed that was so heinous in the previous administration. And especially when the mayor was running against former Mayor Edland. And yet here we are doing the exact same thing. All this talk about transparent and public comment seems to only be when it works in your favor and for the outcome that you so desire. Did I get to red? I can't see it.
Yes, it's red.
Okay, I'll stop there.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. And Alexis, I'm sorry, you've been up there for a while as we're making our way through other folks. Alexis?
Yeah, I'm here. So I have just some clarifying questions to ask. And what I'd like to see is some more with the data. I know that we've been told by the police that under tunnel, but I will say, well, they think that's going to bring data on how many kids would use the bike path. I know it's been mentioned. And if that's going to be beneficial, then I think that's something that we should look at. But I really think the data should show us if that's really going to address the concern. I think sometimes the intentions are good, but really looking at what is that truly going to help is what we need to see. And without the data, we won't be able to see that. And I think that making decisions based on facts is really important. And I don't think we have the facts to do that. And what I would say is that coming from an area where I work in Santa Cruz, I see lots of homeless people and the rights that they have in dealing with the rights, even in the hospital that I work with. I do see that being a major issue of how we would police them and make sure that they didn't live in there. I will say homeless people find shelter and that is a place for shelter. So I'd like to see data on that. And if you can show me data, then, you know, I would let that topic go, but I haven't seen that. And so that's what I'm really looking for is some true facts so we can make an educated decision on how we move forward as a community. I also think that, again, I've also been here now three years and I'm a local resident, a three-time generation, and I haven't gotten any flyers. The first I heard of this was from a neighbor. And so just going through the process myself on planning commission and knowing that flyers were sent to all of my neighbors and being subjected to a very scrutinized process, I think everything should be scrutinized the same way. I don't think it should depend on who you know and what connections you have. I think, again, it should be based on facts. And that's how we should approach every situation. So that way there is no favoritism and that we can make sure that we're making educated, profitable, important decisions to keep our community alive and we have a future with Delray Oaks. Because if not, and this does cost us more money and we do have more homeless people here, we're not going to have, our housing is not going to go up and we're going to have a housing issue as well. So we're just going to decrease our revenue again. So I'd like to see data next time we have a meeting.
Are you down?
That's it. Unless you have data to show, show us.
Okay, thank you, Alexis. Any other public comments? Mr. Ragsdale Cronin.
Good evening. I'm going to echo a little bit of, I'm sure you can hear me, Bill Ragsdale, Carlton, 58 Carlton Drive. I want to echo a little bit of what Alexis had to say. I'm for the trail, just to put that on record. But I'd like to get some data on homelessness in Delray Oaks. I've lived here for 13 years and I can't recall seeing homeless camp anywhere in my travels around Delray Oaks. And I'm really trying to figure out as people say, oh, it's going to attract all these nuisances and all these people here, that we're going to put some stripes on Angeles Way. We're going to put some stripes up near Safeway somewhere where there's already a sidewalk and a hall road that connects to Laguna Grande Park, that also connects to the creek area, that also connects to an existing tunnel under Highway 218 and an existing tunnel under General Jim Moore. So I'm trying to figure out in my mind, and maybe someone can answer this question for me at some future meeting, what's going to change all of a sudden? And we maybe remove the magical force field behind Safeway that stops them from coming in? Because there's certainly a giant hall road that goes right through Memorial, I think it's working Memorial Park there now with the garden center, that anyone can walk through at any time. And it's not even developed and it's quite easy for people to walk through. So I don't understand the angst about homelessness. I can understand having bicycles go down city streets, people worried about pulling out of their driveways and maybe hitting someone or whatever. But I don't get the homeless question. So if someone somewhere could maybe come up with some data on how many homeless people we arrest and haul away to the hospital to get checked out every day, week, month, year in Delray Oaks? And how many more are going to come because we make some change in signage? That might help some folks make a decision one way or the other. And I think that's enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wig, did you have your hand up again?
Okay, I'm at, I'm at Amy's house using a computer.
Okay.
Can you, can you see me? I'm wondering why I can't see people. It keeps changing.
It's because it's the timer.
Oh.
But please, go ahead.
I see, I see other people at times. Anyway, I'm Catherine Truvarlay. I've lived in Delray Oaks 15 years. My husband and I started a dog park. We're the mom and pop of the dog park. I, I'm opposed to the, to the tunnel and the, what you want to do with the bike trail for several reasons that have already been mentioned as far as the ecological balance and the wonderful things we have in the Frog Pond and as well as the homeless, et cetera. I was also, let's see, I'm looking on here. I also was, didn't know about the pride flag until somebody left a flyer on my doorstep. I must not be on the email list. I'd like to be on the email list. And I'm looking forward to when we can meet in person. I'm the one that wrote an email to every council member, but I wasn't sure they got it because when I checked with one, they said they hadn't received it. It was Memorial Day when I wrote it. I also decided to call City Hall and leave a message, make sure that communication got through, that I was opposed to the flag. And then I decided to make a trip down there in person. I talked to the city manager. And while I was there, I wrote a personal note to you, Mayor Ellison, and to Kim Schuh. So it was, you know, I was, I was upset that Memorial Day had not been featured with veterans. But I also think that for a special interest group that doesn't represent the majority of our community, that flags would be more likely flown from personal yards rather than a city, City Hall where national, state, and city flag should be featured. That's my opinion. Governmental. So, and I don't consider LGBT governmental. I have friends. I'm not opposed to special interest groups. But I just wanted to say I didn't think City Hall was appropriate for the flag. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on anything not on the agenda? I want to make sure there's a lot of folks here. I want to make sure.
Mayor, if no one else is, I have a letter from.
Hello.
Says, oh, there we go.
Hello, sir. I, I'm sorry to butt in, but I don't know how to, I don't know how to throw up the hand.
That, that's okay. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yeah, thanks. My name is Cosmo. I live in Delray Oaks on Portola. 21-year resident of Delray Oaks. Lifelong resident of the area. I grew up on Buena, which is right off of Kimball. Gone through Delray Oaks all my life. Used Carlton on my bike when I was a kid without a bike path. No problems every day going down to the Moose Lodge and back on 218. I'd like to second what the majority of the people are saying. I don't want to just, you know, continue to say the same thing. I just want to second what they're saying about opposing the bike trail. I'd like to add my portion about it. I see this project becoming one of the, one of the ways to pay for the mistake the past council made for trying to make a bike path on Carlton Drive that's been spoken about quite a bit on individuals saying, we don't like it. Let's change it. Council says, well, it's hold off. We don't have the money. So now it sounds like we're using money to do something they should have done in the first place. I'm also opposed to flying the pride parade, the pride flag at the city hall. You're free to fly any flag you want at your home. City council should not made the decision to fly the flag. We should be able to fly any flag at city council from now on if you're going to fly that flag. And I just want a second that I am opposed to the trail that's going to go through Delray Oaks to speak, sorry, but I'm unprepared because I just found out about what's going on. I did not get any pre-information on, hey, we're going to be doing this trail thing. And so I just found out tonight, hey, here's a chance to speak your words. So I really, sorry about being unprepared. I did hear say someone, there is a tunnel that goes under 218 already. Well, it's, it's a tunnel for the floodplain. It's not lit. It's not safe to walk under. You're basically going to be a troll if you're going to live in there because it's, it's wet all the time. I used to play in there as a kid, so I'm fully aware of what kind of tunnel it is. It's not a tunnel to be used by humans. So to say that, you know, why isn't there homeless in there? The homeless aren't even going to live in there because it's just wet all the time. And that's all I got. I just want to tell you how opposed I am and how upset I am for the fact that council has made this decision without talking to the public about it first. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm done.
Thanks, Cosmo. Acting City Manager, you had a letter to read?
I do, Mayor. Resident asked that staff would read a letter for. And I have an email from Cindy Hickey at 811 Adair. First statement is, I am opposed to the current plans for the Delray Oaks portion of Fortag and safe routes to school. If major construction must be done, I would prefer to see a roundabout in the area with signalized crosswalks along 218, including the crosswalk at work. I cross at work regularly and use the stairway to Portola and Tweed. My children attended Delray Woods Elementary. I would take that path since it is direct. It would get me to the school in about five to seven minutes. I would not use the proposed tunnel and large switchback ramp into the Frog Pond at 7:30 AM. It would not feel safe to me and would add about 20 minutes to the walk. I'm also opposed to the proposed plan because of negative impacts to the Frog Pond habitat, threat of overuse, parking issues in residential neighborhoods, possible increase in crime and cost to the city to maintain and patrol the trail. I believe that Fortag, once completed, will be primarily used for recreation and the city of Delray Oaks should not take on this burden, especially considering that we live in a region that already has an unusually high number of recreational opportunities.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Karen, do you see any hands?
I'm not seeing any other hands.
Okay. Okay, on that, I'm going to close public comment and we're going to move on to the next presentation. So I'll turn this over to Acting City Manager Hoine for Racial Identity Profiling Act of 218. So I'll turn this over to, uh, Acting City Manager Hoyn for Racial Id- Identity Profiling Act of two thousand and fifteen or RIPA?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council and residents and guests. This next presentation will be by Acting Chief Chris Berkwin. It goes over some of the requirements of the Racial Identity Profiling Act of twenty sixteen, or as we call it, RIPA. It mandated, uh, some extensive changes in police reporting procedures for contacts and then also a data collection about racial identity and profiling that the state will use. This has been a phased act. And it started with larger police departments trickling down to smaller police departments uh, over the course of several years. We are now required to soon start collecting this data. It, uh, led to us having to get a brand new records management system and also, uh, some other software so that we could properly do this. So we just want to let council and our community know uh, why we spend money and what we spend in, in the, uh, the reasoning behind it. So Chief, I will turn it over to you, sir.
Uh, thank you, Chief and City Council Mayor, uh, public. I'm happy to, uh, be here uh, to talk about RIPA. Um, I am not an expert. We're all learning. Um, Randy, if you're able to bring up the slides. Okay, well. Next slide, please. Okay, I'm not seeing. Just one moment, please. Okay. So the key provisions of RIPA. It requires entities, your police department, to collect perceived demograph- demographic and other detailed data regarding pedestrian and traffic stops annually. It establishes what's called the RIPA Board, uh, which I'll talk about later in the slideshow. It's a, a board made up of, um, some in law enforcement, but most in other areas, uh, within our community. And it also changes some, uh, reporting requirements regarding, uh, submitting complaints. Next slide. Here's a list of people uh, or agencies and their sizes and when they had to start reporting. Uh, Monterey County, we all fell into an area that we are all waived for. So no data, with the exception of CHP, um, has been reported for Monterey County before. We will begin reporting January first, twenty twenty-two. And the first report, which the RIPA Board puts out with our data, will be April first of twenty twenty-three. So, um, this isn't going to happen overnight. Next slide. Okay, let's talk about the definitions. What is a stop? So it's any detention by a peace officer of a person or to any peace officer interaction with a person in which the officer conducts a search, which will be defined here shortly. Next slide. Uh, search of a person's body or property, um, under his control. It includes a pat-down search. Um, I know that we have some, uh, people familiar with law enforcement within our, uh, our, our council meeting tonight, but some aren't. But a pat-down search is very cursory. Uh, what, what you would do, uh, just for safety purposes, uh, looking for weapons before you would speak to somebody under certain circumstances when you felt, uh, the need to do so. So that pat-down required reporting through this, um, through RIPA. Next. Uh, and let's see, did okay, can you go back one, Randy? Okay, next slide. All right, so the information to be collected is about the stop itself. So what happened during the pedestrian contact or traffic stop? Uh, information about the actual person involved in the stop. The, the subject that was stopped and then information about the person making the stop, which is of course us. Next slide. Information regarding the stop itself. I'm not going to go through every point. Um, hopefully, uh, the, those that are very interested will, uh, be able to get a copy of the slideshow. Um, it's fairly straightforward in terms, terms of the, the information that we collect. A date and time, a location, why. Everybody wants to know why. Um, was it a stop, uh, response for a call, call for service? Any evidence or contraband discovered, property seized and the results of the stop? What happened? When it was a warning, it was a citation, it was a rest or what happened? Next slide. This is the most, uh, I guess, uh, interesting portion of this, the, the, the RIPA data that we collect. Um, it's important that, uh, folks know that when you are contacted by, by us, that we'll, we will be looking at, at these type things. And that's one of the main reasons why I wanted to bring it to City Council so everybody would know. So the Department of Justice isn't interested in your race, ethnicity, age, gender, uh, sexual orientation, whether you speak English or not, or whether you have a disability. They couldn't care less about whether you actually have these things. They want to know whether we think uh, that what your race is, what your gender is, what your age is. So when we conduct these stops, we will be actually, um, without the use of an ID or any other prompting, be required to ask or answer these questions uh, in a list of all questions, including the ones that you saw before regarding yourself. So I wanted to go over briefly, um, the, the choices that would, are available to us if anyone's interested. This seems to be the most talked about portion, um, of it, both for us and for the public in general, because it was, um, a little hard to grasp at first. So, uh, upon a stop, in terms of your, uh, race, we've got choices of Asian, Black, African-American, Hispanic, Latino, Latino, Middle Eastern, South Asian, Native American, Pacific Islander and white. Um, and, and you can have more than one box checked of those. You can have, well, I guess you could, well, you could check more than one. It doesn't say how many, but it says check all of it, apply. In terms of your gender, we have male, female. Uh, we have what's called transgender man-boy, that's somebody was, that was born, uh, a biological male and transitioned to female and then transgender woman-girl, which is vice versa. And then we have gender non-conforming. So those are our choices under gender. Age is kind of self-explanatory. Um, we, uh, they're, they're interested in our perception of whether the person that we stop is, uh, LGBT. It's just a yes or a no. Uh, whether tho- those are our two choices there. Um, limited or no English fluency. Our choices are yes or no. And then perceived or known disability, which is kind of, um, different from the others, the way I see it. And that it, it, it talks about a known disability. So it could be somebody that we're already familiar with. So it would not necessarily be, be a perception that would be known. We have, uh, deafness and difficulty, uh, hearing, speech impediment or limited use of, uh, language, blind or limited vision, mental health condition, intellectual or development disability, including dementia, other disability, none, and disability related to hyperactivity or impulsive behavior. I believe, I'm not a hundred percent sure that applies to maybe RIPA at, uh, schools. Yeah, K through twelve public schools. So, again, uh, this, the data being collected and being analyzed has nothing to do with anyone's actual uh, race, age, gender, or anything I have listed on this slide. It's what we think that applies to you, if that makes sense. Next slide. And this is the information on us. Uh, years of experience, type of assignment, and there are, uh, quite a few. I won't go through them all. Uh, in Delray Oaks, uh, ninety-nine point nine percent will be patrol, traffic enforcement, field operations. Um, and then a you, an unique identification number. So nobody will know, including the Department of Justice, what Chris, myself, uh, checked on the boxes. Uh, because the number isn't associated to me. It's, it is, um, that's, that's why it's, it's unique and it's not, it's not known what, what my number is, just that there is a number assigned to me. They will, however, know what our department as a whole uh, data looks like. Um, you can currently actually go on and they'll get to the slide in a few minutes, uh, to a website and look at data from the larger agencies that are already reporting. Next slide, Randy. Um, so in addition to, this is more of a check the box type before this point, but we have an open form field, two hundred and fifty characters where we can explain the reason why the person was stopped. And a little bit more information. What they don't want is your name, who, who you actually are that we stop, where you actually live. Um, it's, it's more location, uh, based rather than, or location as in general location, not cer- specific addresses, specific names. They're not interested in that. Next slide. This is, uh, the repository where all of this data will go. Um, we actually got an email, uh, very recently. Uh, they have set up a test application for us. Um, next slide. Okay. Um, the, I'll go, go back, Randy. I didn't know if I was going to get into more of that. So the, the, the application that we're going to be using is a DOJ product. It's not done yet. Um, there is a way to use it on, uh, a computer within an office, but you kind of want to take care of these things at the time of the stop when your memory is more fresh. And so, uh, they're working on a, a phone app. That's what we're going with. Um, larger agencies that have mobile data terminals in their cars are able to use those. We do not have mobile data terminals, so we're going to be reliant on a phone. I asked eight months ago, um, when the phone thing was coming out, they said they're working on it. I asked yesterday, they say they're working on it. So, um, they better be working on it because we're, we're rolling down the road at pretty high speed right now. We'll be there before we know it. We need this thing to work for us. Uh, so as we don't, uh, uh, accrue any, uh, more bills. Next. These are the folks that are on the RIPA Board. I'm not going to go through them all. Um, in general, the bottom tier, the bottom three are uh, appointed by government officials. Uh, the middle area, uh, religious kind of clergy, uh, type, uh, community organizers and a professor. And then if we come up, uh, to the third or I guess second to the top, we do have the California Highway Patrol. Will be represented in terms of law enforcement by them, by the Police Chiefs Association, by the Sheriff's Association, um, within this board. Next. So what they do, they're going to analyze this information, the data. Um, they're going to, uh, uh, look at trends and how they can make, uh, recommendations for training for us. Um, that, that is their, their main goal. They will publish a report as well, a yearly report. The very first RIPA report was published about two, three months ago. It's quite long. Um, our, um, Police Advisory Committee, I sent them a, a shorter version, a two, three pager. And, uh, it's also available on this website that we'll get to at the end of this thing. Next. Here are some, uh, important websites. Uh, the RIPA Quick Fact, that's the one that I sent to our folks on the, uh, on the, uh, the committee. It's, it really does, well, one sixty pages versus four. Well, I started with the four myself. Um, Open Justice is a really cool, uh, website. It kind of means what it says. So you can literally go into Open Justice and research by city. You can do your own data crunching, if you're into that. Um, and, uh, the, the files are available from the Department of Justice if you want to download raw files and do whatever you're going to do with them. But it's available at the Open Justice website. Next, Randy. Oh my gosh, that kind of just ends, doesn't it? Okay, uh, does anybody have any questions for me?
So, uh, what we'll do is we will start with, I'm sorry, we'll, uh, start with the council. Uh, Vice Mary Lindell?
Pat, you're muted.
Hang on, let me, let me see if I can mute her. I'm muted. There she is.
Okay, I'd like to thank, uh, Chris for the excellent presentation. Um, it clarified many things and I thank you very much and I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, Councilperson Gagliotti?
Yeah, I mean, I, I have a business that collects data and I just, I question kind of, first of all, I question kind of the validity of, of what we're doing just because the, the question they're asking is, is perception. So it's, so we're throwing in subject, which is, you know, so, or so, subjectivity and, and also bias. I mean, this whole thing seems to be kind of biased and we're trying to kind of tease out. Is there bias or how is bias kind of impacting the, the, the role of the, of what, you know, public safety officers are, are supposed to be doing? Um, but setting that aside, I mean, I get that there's, there's, there's people who I get much smarter than me that, that have kind of crafted this whole thing. And so I, I guess what I'm, my only comment maybe is that, um, I really appreciate our, our police department just taking this on, whether, whether I agree with the validity or question, you know, think, question what good we're going to get out of this. Um, I really appreciate that you guys are, um, you're putting your best effort forward and, uh, and, and trying to put, you know, good data in here. I mean, that's always the, that's, to me, it's always the problem is that you're garbage in, garbage out, you know, and, and I just think that after a while, especially if this app is kind of hacked and, and it doesn't necessarily work, then we're just going to get a bunch of bad data and a bunch of bad inferences are going to be drawn from it. And so I, I, I see that this could be more problematic than, than, than the benefit we're trying to get out of it, but I appreciate what you guys are doing and, and that you're, that you're taking it serious.
Thanks, sir.
Councilperson Donaldson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Chris, you did an outstanding job laying out the requirements. And really, for me, it emphasizes just how difficult a job that our police officers have. And, um, you know, what a wonderful job that our police force does. So thank you for that. I have no questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilperson Shirley?
Hi, everyone. Hi, Chris. Thank you so much for your presentation. You actually answered many of my questions. One of them, again, is, is how you're going to enter in all that data. So I do hope that, uh, smart app is there and available for all of you. Since larger jurisdictions have already implemented this, um, what's the feeling in law enforcement in how it's doing? I understand, uh, Councilperson Gagliotti's sort of response in that, you know, it, it is perception. And so, which is important to evaluate, but how, how do you validate that, that data that's going in? And so I'm just curious, curious how larger jurisdictions are feeling about these reports that are coming out. Do they feel like, um, it's a, it's a benefit and is, are they, is, are they on board? I'm just curious.
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, we are kind of isolated here in Monterey County. We don't have a larger agency to come and talk to. I have talked to other agencies, larger agencies about the implementation part of it. Um, there was a meeting, uh, regarding data. I mean, my first question for our committee was, well, what are the expectations? What, uh, what would, what would be reasonable? Should our numbers, our, our, our people that we represent in this data look like the citizens of Delray Oaks? Well, if we, if they didn't go anywhere, you, meaning the citizens, and nobody was allowed in, then I would say, yeah. But that's not the reality. So I, I, I'm hoping for it looks like California. I think that would be reasonable, that the data in terms of the people we stop reflect kind of the way California looks. Um, I don't know any other way to do it. a way to figure that part of it out. And it'll be a surprise for all of us, you know? We won't know until, well, two, a year and a half. We'll meet again.
Yeah. All right. And I must, and again, I know what they're getting at with unconscious. Do, do, does everyone already go through unconscious bias, bias training?
We in fact had bias-based training recently. It's, it's a reality. Let's be honest, you know? And it's not, it, it doesn't always come from a hurtful place. It's not about that. And the longer I've been in my job, the more I've seen even in my profession in terms of who, who are the police officers? Well, they don't make us in a factory somewhere. We're kind of plucked out of your neighborhoods. So we kind of look like your neighborhoods do. So, but everybody comes with something. And that's what you got to be mindful. It's about knowing it. And that's what we talk about. You know, we got to be open and honest with each other. And then that's, that's the way we handle it. We're small enough that we can hold each other accountable. Our chief holds us accountable. That's all we can ask from, from each other.
Yeah, I agree. I appreciate that. Thank you very much, Chris.
Counselmember Shirley, if I might add, being modest, one of the things we did at our agency and Chris facilitated was getting post experts to come here. And actually, we hosted bias-based policing training here in our city for other agencies as well as ourselves.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I kind of agree with everybody, the concern about the data. But what I'm interested in seeing is the very first report to see what kind of surprises come, come out of this. And I may have missed it, but when did this start? Or when was this requirement put into place?
So the, the, the act was passed in 2015. The first reporting agencies, which by the way, were already, a lot of, like LAPD was on, already under, I forget what you call it. It's almost like, kind of like a conservatorship. So they, they've been collecting this data for a long time. Maybe not in this exact way, but they've been collecting this data. There's no doubt about it. But agencies like that started in, I believe, 2018. So that's why it took until 2021 to finally get the first RIPA board report out, out, out to, to us.
Are we expecting a report annually?
That's correct. That's, that's, that's a responsibility, the RIPA board. Not only will they direct us towards, you know, training efforts and, and the rest of it. It's a multi kind of attack from all different kinds of angles. They'll give recommendations to post who are most responsible for our training. But I'm sorry, I lost track of your question. What was the, what was the question exactly?
It, it's okay. We're going around and around. And I, and I just want to make a comment that Acting City Manager Hoin and I have been talking about having someone from the county come in and do governing for racial equity training. And hopefully, and that would include the council, the planning commission, the police, and any citizen volunteers. So on that, I'll just echo our, my thanks as well. I think the communication is vital. And so, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. So I'm going to go out to the public and I see Kathy.
Hi. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First off, this all started, I'm intimately aware of RIPA and what's entailed with it. And it started with consent decrees in larger agencies across the country that were having issues. And unfortunately, police officers are second guessed and people have forever to make a decision on what a police officer decides in a split second. Most of the time when a police officer or deputy or whomever in law enforcement pulls somebody over, they have no idea of the, the race, let alone the gender of the individual. They know that there's somebody in front of that headrest and they did something illegal, whether it's an infraction or something more. So, you know, police officers need, they, they take a lot of heat over that and they shouldn't. My question about this is, will the police department be storing any of the data? Are they using the RIPA app through YOST? What RIPA app are you using and will the data be stored? And if it is being stored, will the police department be required to release this information via public records requests?
Yeah, that was a big talk in our RIPA training. Thank you, Kathy. So we'll be using the DOJ hosted application. So it won't be, it's not a real application. It's, it's, I guess, better way to put it would be a, an easy to use phone, not real app, but application that you can, you can use to enter this stuff. In terms of storing it here, my understanding is that it's not stored onsite. DOJ does have this information and it's available to anybody that wants it. In terms of putting a name of a, of a, of an officer with particular data, I'm told that that's not possible. But you know how that goes.
Thank you, Kathy. Alexis.
So my question is, and I heard you say in the beginning of your presentation, and sorry, I lost you and got kicked off. But with that being said, is that you guys are going to do a better job about when someone calls in or those kind of situations? What are you going to do to make sure that there's communication between yourselves and the police department when someone is calling in something and there could be a racial tie to that conversation or discrimination caught per that call? And how are you going to make sure that the police don't end up being in the middle of those racial controversies between neighbors and hold them accountable for false reporting situations?
That's a long question. I'm familiar with what you're talking about. We're available to talk to you. We reached out to talk to you. And we remain open to talking to you about this.
Well, I, I've also reached out to talk to you guys and asked for specific data. And my question is, is how are you holding residents to being accountable to not having, not participating in discrimination acts? And how are we going to prevent that from happening to other neighbors, to neighbors and not be a part of that? And so what is going to be the repercussion for false reporting just because someone doesn't like someone's race or doesn't like the individual?
If someone has, feels that they have been falsely reported on, they need to file a police report with the city. It's something that I've talked to, somebody that you've been talking with. I don't think we should go into it further. We're happy to talk to you. If you need to talk to us about filing a false police report, we're here for you. I'll have you come down to the police department.
Chris, if I might add, you know, having just come over to City Manager's office to, or from the police department, Alexis, there are very many types of false reports and they're not necessarily based on anything other than false reports. So they, we'll do what we always do. We'll go to any situation, we'll assess the situation in as unbiased and neutral party matters as we possibly can. And if we find out there has been some sort of violation of law related to that report, we'll, we'll take a report and we will hold people accountable through the district attorney's office. A lot of times we get third-hand information that we can't trace or track who did it because it comes through our communication center. So it is assessing each situation separately, assessing if there's reason to take a report because it was a false report and then following up on it with whatever information we have and taking the, the correct steps. It's what we do now.
Thank you.
So can I, can I just add, could I just ask to that? So you're saying people report? So is, could there be a requirement that if you're going to calls and report something that you're required to leave your name and your information?
No, people aren't required to do that. But this is a much longer conversation than we probably have online or offline because we have a whole city council meeting to get through and other people may have some questions.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chris? Seeing no hands raised, I'm going to come back to the council. Any last comments, questions? I'm not seeing any hands. So Chris, thank you so much for coming and sharing this with us. And I look forward to seeing, maybe we can have you come back and talk about this when the report comes out.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Does any council member want to pull an item off of the agenda, the consent agenda? Anyone in the public want to pull any item off of the consent agenda? Okay, on that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Karen, could you please do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Donaldson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lintell?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr.
Aye. So the consent agenda passes unanimously. We have no old business and we're going to move on to new business. Does anyone on the council have an issue with swapping A and B so we could do the Monterey County Veterans Issues Advisory Committee first? I think that our conversation about the budget's going to take a little longer. Any issues?
I don't have any issues. I would support that. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I also support that.
Okay. And it sounds good. Thank you. Is Mr. Johnson here?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, great. There you are. So normally we have lots of folks that are wanting this position and we ask questions. I'm, I'll open it up to the council to see if they have anything. But first and foremost, I want to thank you for volunteering for this position.
Well, you're well, I'm sorry.
Why don't we start with you? If you would like to say, you know, some comments or perhaps tell us why.
First of all, thank you for moving this on the agenda. I appreciate that. The reason I want to do it is perhaps, I believe that in an area such, such as Monterey County especially, that benefits so greatly from the military that we have here and what it does to our economy, it means that our responsibility to the veterans and to those in service at this time is even greater. And so I would like to represent that. I've had quite a bit of experience, certainly while I was the MPC trustee, working with the statewide Veterans Caucus for colleges. And also because, dare I say, I'm kind of old. I graduated from DLI in 1968. I did sit on the Naval Postgraduate School Institutional Review Board. And, and at this point, I get to brag that my son Tyler, who is a child of Delray Oaks, is the current, is currently an army major and is the United States Defense Attache in the country of Rwanda. So as we talk about military, both in the past, as far as veterans and as people that are serving and displaying their courage now, it is, I consider those coming together. And I would be honored to represent Delray Oaks. And I would be extremely honored to work with and represent the veteran community.
Well, I'm glad to hear that you're, you have experience with committees and committee work. And IRB, that's some pretty serious stuff. So thank you very much. Let's go out to the council to see if they have any comments, questions. Vice Mayor Lintell.
Thank you. In reading your qualifications and what you have had to say tonight, Rick, I, I think that you would represent Delray Oaks very nicely. And I'm definitely in favor of it. And thank you so much for coming up and making the offer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselperson Gagliotti.
Yeah, I echo exactly what, what Pat just said in that I, I had, I had an idea of who I thought, I mean, I know a number of the veterans in, in the community. And what was, was told by some other people that are also veterans that, you know, Rick Johnson lives in your neighborhood and he does, he's done all this. And I thought, well, that's great. And I was really, really glad to hear that someone had knocked on your door and said, you should run for this. So I'm excited that you ran. I'm excited that you, that you, you will be appointed. And I think you're going to represent our community and the veterans as a whole wonderfully. So thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Counselperson Donaldson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I know that we only have one candidate, but I will tell you, I can't think of a better candidate. Rick Johnson is exceptionally qualified and just overall a wonderful person. And as a veteran, I would be honored to have him as our representative on this committee.
Thank you, Scott.
Counselperson Shirley.
Mr. Johnson, thank you so much for stepping forward. I know you are very familiar with community and outreach and you work really hard. And as an MPC faculty, I've always appreciated your work. So I'm, again, I'm very honored that you're willing to take this position. And thank you very much for all of your work that you do. You do so much.
Thank you.
So I'd like to go out for public comments. Does anyone have anything to say or add?
I would like to. I don't know how to put up my hand. I just know how to hit the speak thing.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks. This is Cosmo from Portola again. I just want to thank Mr. Johnson for stepping up to take this on. Mr. Johnson has done a fabulous job in the downtown Monterey area for a number of years. And I'm extremely happy to hear that he's now going to represent the city it lives in and our city in Delray Oaks. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Cosmo, very much.
Alexis?
I just want to say thank you for your service and everything you've done for our nation. And I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, let's come back to the council. So I do want to acknowledge Louise Getzel, who was our representative, kind of our informal representative for quite a while. And I know that she will be gracious with whatever information that you may need that might be helpful in taking over her, in her shoes. On that, if no one has any comments, we need a vote, any motion?
I make a motion that we, that we nominate Rick Johnson as our Veterans Issue Administrator or Community.
I'll second it. Okay. Karen, could you please do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lintell?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr.
Aye. So it's unanimous. Welcome and thank you. Please reach out to City Hall and I'll make sure you know when the meetings are and how to get ahold of Louise. So thank you again. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I have to tell you, it's a pure joy when you're the only candidate. So thank you so much. Have a good evening, everyone.
You too. All right. So we're going to move on to consider the 2021-22 municipal budget, including the American Rescue Plan Act 2021 ARPA update. I'll turn this over to our Acting City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And-
Thank you, Mayor and council, and citizens and guests who are left. This staff report is asking you to consider our proposed budget for fiscal year 2021-2022. First, the good news is that, again, it appears that our budget is balanced. And that is something to be happy in these extremely difficult times with COVID and an economic downturn. So many cities in our area are not as lucky as we are to be in this position. A couple other things that you should note about this budget. We've tried really hard in the past year to change the budget format and start crafting a budget that is more transparent and has much more detail, whether it's by fund or by line item. And we will continue to do so in the coming years. It is our hope that as we get better at this, it'll be much easier for not only the council but our residents to understand more clearly where the money that they have coming into their city goes. And I would like to thank Roberto Moreno for working with us on that in great detail. It has been a lot of work. Additionally, Roberto will also give an update on the American Rescue Plan Act. I believe he was in some training today, just today, that dealt with municipal and public sector accountants and the processes and procedures that are forthcoming for that. And it's our hope that that will set the stage for further council discussion about what exactly we want to allocate those ARPA funds for. So again, I'd like to thank Roberto, but I'd also like to thank Karen and Randy. This was a lot of work with personnel shortages and Karen being out and working from home and assisting us. And hopefully, you'll see that reflected in the product. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our contract accountant, Roberto. And again, thank you, Roberto.
Might I interject just for a minute? We're not discussing the dispersment of ARPA funds this evening, are we?
No, that's, I had mentioned in a future council, we could perhaps do that.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Kerr, members of the council, you have before you the consideration of the proposed budget for fiscal year 21-22. There is a staff report with lots of numbers, but because there are lots of numbers, we'd like to briefly review some of these numbers with you, answer any questions you might have. This, a similar presentation was made to the Finance Committee. Some of the comments that were made there have been incorporated into this budget document. So what I'd like to do is start with a big picture overview and then we'll get into the details. And then afterwards, we can just briefly discuss some of the information that I heard today regarding the ARPA and how those funds can be spent. And just, you know, we're gonna talk basically off of the staff report that you received. But the approval of the budget encompasses a whole bunch of other resolutions. The, all the positions in the city approving the salary schedule, approving the fees, all those things. But for the most part, we're gonna dedicate our time right now to these numbers that are in the budget document. And that being the case, I'd like to share my screen if I could, Randy. Somebody give me the option to share my screen a little bit.
Okay, you're good.
Alright, thank you. So the budget is balanced, as was mentioned. It's gonna start restoring some of the cuts made during the pandemic. It is a one-year budget. There's been so many changes that it's kind of hard right now to predict what's gonna happen. There's still some unknowns. But it is balanced. Now, one of the first things that you'll notice in this summary is that now we have quite a few funds. In the past, the budget was basically one set of revenues, one set of expenditures. Because really, all the city had was a general fund for the most part. But because of events that transpired, there's now quite a few more funds. So just wanted maybe start with the big picture. This is a summary by fund. So the total revenues for the city for this coming year, 21-22, are estimated about 4.8 million. The city's appropriating about 4.2 million. There's some transfers in and out between funds, but overall, in total, we're anticipating about a $592,000 surplus as it stands right now, money available. And we're starting out with an $11 million fund balance. Now, that's in total. However, we can't really consider that because every one of these funds has to be considered individually. We can't really take money from one to the other. So we're gonna consider the various aspects of the budget by fund. And just a little bit to provide a little bit of background also for the public here. The general fund is where pretty much all the day-to-day operations of the city take place. And it, when you take revenues over appropriations or the expenditures, a transfer out that's gonna take place, we will end up, we're projected to end the year with a $272,000 surplus, which is about 7% of the appropriation. So that's basically almost like a contingency there. We should have some money left over. We're starting with $1.9 million, which is pretty much all tied up in the Economic Uncertainty Reserve. And there's some money, about $300,000 set aside also for funding of the city's CalPERS long-term retirement cause. So the general fund is in good shape, all things considered. And we'll discuss more as to why in a little bit. Then we have special revenue funds. These are monies that can only be used for specific purposes. The gas tax fund is money that's collected on gasoline and has been for a long time. Comes in about $41,000. It's primarily being used, it can only be used for street-related purposes. In this case, it's been used for street lighting and street sweeping. Those two items cost $25,000. We're trying to keep this very simple because the city did the state audits, the gas tax fund, every so often. Unfortunately, sometimes it waits too long. The last time Delray Oaks had an audit, it was 12 years ago. I mean, it covered a 12-year period. So to make that audit easier, simpler, if we keep it to simple items that the auditor has no problems with, there's $16,000 surplus. That fund balances will increase over time and can be used for other street projects. The other fund here, the SB1 fund is also, it's gas tax revenues. The new gas tax, when the gas tax were increased under the Road Rehabilitation and Maintenance Act, that brought in more money, close to what we're getting just from the regular gas tax. So it's been coming in at about $33,890. It hasn't been spent in the past. It's newer money. This year, proposing to spend $55,000 on some road improvements. The Portola work, Portola work walkway and some curb replacement projects. So it will use up some of the beginning fund balances of $73,000, but we'll still have $50,000 by the end of the year. So there'll be about $100,000 available later on for street-related projects. Measure X is a fund that, as you can see, has no net impact to the city because this is the Measure X money that's being collected through TMC. $76,000 is the city's allocation. But back in 1819, the city chose to borrow against the future allocations because $76,000 doesn't do much for a project. So the city borrowed $861,300 of Measure X money, basically about the next 10 years where the biggest street project in the city was done. Now, as money comes in, that money is used to pay back TMC for borrowing that. So probably for about 10 years, we'll see it coming in and going out. It won't be on the city because TMC basically is keeping it, but we do have to report it. It comes in, it is a debt that the city has paying that down. So there will be nothing coming out of this. This has already been used. We do have, the city has another fund, the FORA Habitat Fund. No monies to be collected right now because the city got that money last year, $755,000 last fiscal year. This year, $73,000 is proposed for Habitat Management Planning Work that's been contracted out. The other special revenue fund can only be used for certain things. The CARES Act Fund, which is no longer, has any revenue this year, this coming year. It was used in the current fiscal year. We got $50,000 from the state, presumed to be used for public safety. It came in and went out, but there'll be no more of this money. Instead, what we have now is gonna be the ARPA Fund. The American Rehabilit, let me see if I can remember the name, the American Rescue Plan Act. The city is slated to receive about $297,600. About half of it is due to come in July, with another half later on. As you can tell, there's no appropriations. This is just to give you an idea, it's basically a placeholder. $297,000 will be available. We'll talk more about the proposed, the possible uses. The rules are still developed. Right now, they're at the interim final rule level. So there isn't a final, final rule yet. They're still taking into account what agencies have to say about it. But we'll discuss some potential uses for this above and beyond what the city's already spending. So this will be a nice addition to the city, $297,600. As everything gets finalized, we will come back with a report in detail with some options for the council. So these all are for only specific purposes. In addition to that, the city has what's called capital project funds. This is a brand-new one. It's a new fund for the Prop 68 Parks Grant Fund. The city is expecting to receive about $141,600 from Prop 68. It was a voter initiative. It was approved. About $177,000 is proposed to be spent on park improvements. And there will be more detail on that because the city has to share in some of those costs. $35,400 is proposed to be transferred from the general fund to this fund to cover the city's share. And when it's all said and done, there will be no more fund balance in here because all of that money will have been used for the park improvements. So park improvements are coming. These are projects, not ongoing maintenance, but for park improvements. The city also has these other funds that came as a result of the dissolution of FORA. The South Boundary Road Engineering Fund, there's $518,000 that we received last June, 2020, a year ago, to be used for the Witten Engineering Contract that the city assumed from FORA for the design of South Boundary Road. There's also a million dollars that was received a year ago for the actual construction of the intersection of South Boundary Road and General Jim Moore Intersection. And there's 7.2 million that was also received for the actual construction of South Boundary Road. There's nothing right here right now because those things are kind of on hold. Once the city's ready to move forward, it will come, it will come back to the council for appropriation of these funds and award of contracts. But that's still down the road. There's a few holdups on this. So the city does have a lot of other funds, but even though there's $11 million, this $11 million cannot be used for whatever council wants. They all have strings attached, can only be used for the things that we mentioned here. What council does have full authority over is the general fund to do with as you please. So that's the, just a quick recap, by funds. What we'd like to do right now is talk about the general fund itself. This is just a summary of the general fund, the revenues for the general fund. And by all means, please stop me. If you have some questions, if I can answer it right away, I will. If I tell you that the answer's coming later, we can discuss it in more detail a little bit later. But the general fund revenues have an increase of about 5%. Primarily, I mean, everything's stayed pretty much the same. The main reason for the increases, we're starting to now collect some of that sales tax that was deferred due to COVID-19. The revenue projections are created by HDL. They're the city's contractor for providing sales tax information. But that's the main increase, the 5% increase due to the sales tax. The expenditures here, we're summarizing them a little bit different, rather than line item. This is by what we would call the department. And the budget message also has more information on what I'm gonna review here. But just to, to me, it's easier to review it while we're looking at the numbers here. So the council is basically unchanged. There's a slight increase as we're in the budget. We're restoring to pre-pandemic levels the stipends that were being received by everybody. In particular, the mayor's stipend is coming back. The travel is coming back. Hopefully, as things open, council will be able to attend some more sessions and strategic planning a little bit there. These costs, even though there's an increase in costs, they're offset by the fact that there is no election in fiscal year 21-22. So minimal increase for the city council costs. The larger increase are in the city clerk and city treasurer. Well, city clerk and city manager have the largest ones. The primary reason for the increase in the clerk is threefold. The deputy city clerk right now is being proposed to have the salary increased to the level of the previous deputy city clerk and assistant to the city manager, which she is now fulfilling that role, bringing that salary to that level and adding a full-time administrative assistant. City Hall's been running with one full-time person. This will have two full-time people there. And putting money aside for $35,000 for some temporary assistance, which interim city manager Hoin can address a little bit more if you like. But the main reason here is this restoring the staff, getting it back to where it needs to be to handle all the workload at City Hall. The city manager is primarily just, this is a full-time now, a whole year's worth of salary for the city manager, along with full benefits. When Dino was here, he did not have health insurance because he already had the military. So this is restoring everything. This is what it would cost for a full-time city manager, along with the memberships and things that he will need to be the executive officer. That's the percentage. That's the single biggest increase. So these two. The auditor treasurer, the increase is to fund a full year's worth of financial services through regional government services. When RGS started, it was only covering nine months. This will cover a full year's worth. Legal is staying basically at about the same level. It's not foreseen to come down just because of the legal issues that the city is handling. That's staying about the same. Planning and building, it's not, it may look like it's going down, but it's not. What happens, and when we get into the details, you'll see this budget here includes the housing element. It's contracted out. So when the, it's not included in this year because whatever's left of that contract at the end of the year will then be brought forward. It's a carryover appropriation. It'll be brought forward to the new year along with the grant money that will pay for that. And we can get more into that as we get into the details. It's not that there's less planning and building. It's just not budgeted. It will come in as we finish off the fiscal year and move into the next fiscal year. The government building, the building's not changing much. It's staying pretty much the same. Non-departmental is where we put the, the community, I guess what we're called, member doing contributions. There's more community promotions, community human services, all the other organizations that requested funding are down here. They were in with the city council before, but we moved them down here because they're really not part of the city council operating cause. There's a slight increase there. Police, just a slight 4% increase. And so things of note worth here in the police department is that there is the same number of positions. There is one staff position that's still, one officer position that's not filled. There are some step increases. And there is a new benefit that's proposed of $300 per month for each police officer, which would be a contribution to the deferred compensation plan because there is no cost of living allowance for city employees for this coming fiscal year. We can get more into that as we get into the details of each of these. Fire remains basically the same. That's a contract with the City of Seaside Public Works. There's a slight increase, two things. One is also a proposed salary for the public, increase for the public work supervisor to bring him up to a more competitive salary to that position. And also, we're restoring some of the, when the pandemic first hit, the city uh, the city basically put the brakes on anything that could be stopped. And so uh, but a few costs were reduced. We're trying to restore those back now. Uh, in parks and recreation is pretty much about the same. Not much has changed there. This is just for the operating costs, not any major construction projects. So overall, you can see that there's an eight percent increase in the operating budget. A five percent increase in revenues. The projects that used to be in the general fund are no more. The slurry seal is done. Now the projects are going to be done of the SB one, street projects under the SB one fund. Uh, the sewer design for South Bondry Road is on hold. There's nobody budgeted. And I apologize here, this misses. This is the solar panels at City Hall. That's the last part of it. Uh, those are also done. So there is no projects being funded out of the general fund for this coming year. Therefore, revenues or expenses are actually projected to be three hundred and seven thousand, but we're transferring thirty five thousand, four, four hundred to help pay for the city's share of the park improvements to the other funds. So as it is, we're anticipating a two hundred and seventy two thousand dollar surplus this coming year. Keep in mind, this is a plan. Things could change, but based on what we see right now, this is what's anticipated to take place. That two hundred and seventy two thousand, uh, you'll see in the budget staff report, we're proposing to uh, use some of that to fund the, the economic, add more money to the economic uncertainty fund and also to the city's cowpers uh, obligations that are long-term in nature. Maybe before we switch, the next item would be all of the details in the budget. But uh, there's a couple of other highlights in the budget document itself. I want to make sure that everybody has a chance to review. So in, in this, this is the staff report that you received. We went through the budgets. I highlighted some of these items. Uh, so that the items to keep in mind, major changes. This is now, again, looking at the big picture, the items that are kind of new. One-time items. Uh, the finance committee asked us to break out one time versus ongoing. So these are one-time items in the budget. There's twenty five thousand dollars for personnel manual update. The personnel manual is very old. It needs to be brought up to current standards. There's five thousand for the preparation of our records retention schedule. Also one times, once that's developed, set up, that's what the city will follow. Uh, there's fifty thousand for the work for Tola Walkway and Curves improvements. Uh, there's a hundred and seventy seven thousand for the new, the park improvements with a city match. And there's uh, twenty five thousand for some part-time employee assistance to help with these records retention uh, work that needs to be done. This is one time. It's here this year. Hopefully, if it all gets done, then it won't be back. Something like the park improvements may carry on till next year, but it's just a one-time cost. The things that are ongoing, that have been added to the budget is fifteen thousand for HR contract services. The city has nobody that's an expert in HR. And HR is something that can get you in trouble if you're not following all the rules. So to have a contract for on-call services uh, to deal with HR, uh, human resource issues. Uh, ten thousand for organic waste regulations. That can be talked about a little bit more. And then thirty six thousand, which is a thirty, three hundred dollars a month contribution toward deferred compensation for each police officer. These would become ongoing costs in the budget going forward. Regarding the personnel costs, you've, um, we mentioned a little bit, but I want to reiterate, there is no cost of living increase in the budget. Uh, there is a five percent merit step increase for five positions in the city that are going through salaries increases, the merit steps. There's an increase for the deputy city clerk. Uh, an increase for the public work supervisor. There is one position that's still vacant. And there's five thousand dollars in the budget for a possible salary increase for the police chief once he goes through performance review. And the, the projects, there is still two hundred and thirty two thousand dollars worth of prime capital improvements, which is good. Uh, again, the Portola work walkway funded by SB one, the curb replacement for twenty thousand and the parks improvements. Uh, and then the surplus, as I mentioned, uh, we would like to recommend another hundred and fifty thousand be added to the city's one fifteen trust. A couple of years ago, we brought forth a plan to try and fund the city's cowpers, uh, which is about a lot of total liabilities, about one point five million. So by putting aside a hundred and fifty thousand over the next ten years, that liability can be funded without actually giving the money to cowpers. The city will have the money should it choose to, but the money will not be turned over to cowpers. It's sitting in a one fifteen trust to be used for that. And should the city ever find itself in uh, financial straits, that money can be used to pay cowper's ongoing costs. It can't be used for anything else, but it can't be used for cowper's cost and then add a little bit more to the economic uncertainty reserve. So I mentioned it was reviewed by the finance committee. So there was a couple, just for the finance committee's info, there was a couple minor edits that were done to the numbers. So if you're looking at your old report, the numbers did change. But it's pretty much the same. When you do get around to approving the budget, keep in mind all of these salary, all these resolutions have to be approved in order for the full budget to be operative for this coming fiscal year. Uh, so all things considered, we're quite pleased that the budget is balanced. And there is uh, now room for discussion on what other needs the city may have. Uh, so before we jump into the detail, is there any general discussion that you have, or do we want to just jump into all the detailed numbers?
So what I'd like to do is ask, um, are there any city uh, council member questions before we dive in?
Um, yeah, well, I don't have any questions so much, but I do, I do question, do we need to jump into the actual, the nitty gritty details? I mean, the, the summary is, I mean, we, we know what, we know what the big chunks are. And I think, I think just knowing where our funds are, and then I think that that breakout of kind of where our general funds are, or where our general funds are being expensed was extremely helpful. But I mean, you're going to go now into some of the taxes and stuff like that. I mean, that's, I, I guess maybe on the revenue side that, that would be interesting for us to see, but um, we, we kind of also want to keep engaged. We go, we, we got, we got a lot, you know, kind of a long night. So I, I've read the report and I think, and I'm, I'm going to guess the rest of the council has too, but. So I've just, I, I, I'm just kind of questioning how detailed do we want to get into the details?
Gotcha. Any other council comments on that?
Yeah, Mayor Kerr, I, I do also have some questions that may be, you know, detailed oriented. I think Roberto's doing a great job. I'd like to just hear the rest of his, his uh, report. So, okay, thanks.
Anybody else?
Maybe we could compromise and by just asking specific questions of the report rather than going through every detail of it. Like councilperson Shirley says she has questions. Maybe we could review, uh, have Roberto go through her questions. And if there are any others, rather than going through the entire list.
Okay, uh, councilperson Donaldson?
Yeah, I agree with that approach. I, I don't know if we need to go through every line by line and get down into those details.
So, so what I would suggest is, uh, as Vice Mayor, uh, Lintel mentioned, why don't we start with some questions? And then let's see what holes are missed and we'll leave that to you, Roberto, to fill in. How does that feel for you?
Fine.
Okay. Okay, so, um, uh, councilperson Shirley, would you like to begin?
Sure. Um, I just have a few questions, I guess. Um, we had talked about updating our municipal code. I was wondering if that cost made it into the budget. I didn't see it named specifically. So I was wondering if it was buried someplace.
It did. It did. There was an additional five thousand added.
Okay. What, what line item is it in?
Okay, so uh, right here, you can see there's, there's a musical code service. It's, it's been five thousand a year. It was increased to ten thousand to account for the update.
Okay, perfect. Great, thank you. Um, when we had our finance committee meeting, um, we had a, um, someone there who was talking about gathering for win-win. I was wondering if we were able to give that donation that was being requested. I didn't know if that was combined with community human services. I was just wondering if we could review that.
Yes, uh, it, uh, let me share my screen again here a little bit. It's, it is now in, in the, well, for right now, it's in non-departmental. It's in member dues and contributions. I ran out of time to break it all out. What I would like to do to address like that question and a few others is perhaps each month we can provide a little bit more detail with which agencies are being uh, contributed towards. And it was recommended that we break this out between the actual membership dues that you belong to, like Ambag or things of that nature versus contributions to community organizations. Uh, so we will bring you the detail, but yes, the money is here to pay for that request.
And Roberto, if I may, for the council member Shirley, uh, if you looked at the back of the budget packet, there's a new-
Yeah, I see the membership and contribution.
There's a new line-by-line item list that staff is collecting. It's still a work in progress. It's the, and that will break those line items out even further so that you know what is in every line. And we just, we just started building it and we're still learning what we need to throw in there as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, and then I was wondering about the airport true-up. Um, has that been done? Uh, where is that noted?
We're still working on the airport true-up. There is a not a discrepancy. We just want to make sure that it's calculated properly. Uh, we're working on changing the way it was calculated last year to reflect uh, whose costs are whose. I will give the council update individually on that so that we're making sure, A, that we're making sure that each side is paying exactly what they should be paying and to make sure it's correct. And there will probably also be an amendment to that contract being brought forth to council hopefully soon so that we can uh, document it more accurately and have those costs done correctly and, and broken out by the auditor. So Roberto and I are working on that and I'll update you shortly.
Um, may I ask, may I ask our legal counsel to chime in on that question?
As, as far as the true-up is concerned?
Yeah, and any kind of concerns with uh, passing the budget this evening?
Um, no, as long as it's, it's reflected in the budget. Again, the budget is just, is just a projection. But as long as we follow through with the true-up that's called for with the original contract, and I believe perhaps an amendment with the airport, um, then I think we're okay.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor Kerr, Mayor Kerr, if I may, the, we don't anticipate any changes to these numbers as a result of the true-up. I mean, we've taken all that into account to make sure there wasn't going to have an impact on it. Uh, it's more for the future changes that have to take place in the way the numbers are calculated.
Great, thank you. Sorry, Ms. Shirley.
Yeah, no, thank you. Um, and then uh, I just have one comment in terms of the fee schedule. Um, I, I happened to just went to our website and I, I put in fee schedule and the one that came up was really old. And so I was just wondering, it was a request that maybe we could put the fee schedule up on our website, someplace where it was accessible. Um, I don't, you know, in comparison, it didn't look like, I, I saw, and then I had to dig through council packet and I found the most recent fee schedule that was passed. Um, and it didn't look like any of the numbers had changed. I just want to verify that that's correct.
Yes, so Randy's been working on the website uh, the last several days and we're working on updating as much as we can, including the fee schedule. The fee schedule did not change for this budget proposal. Uh, it, we, we do actually have a study comparing all the other local fee schedules. We'll be working on that moving forward and hopefully either mid-year budget adjustment or before that bring an amendment to change the fee schedule uh, to the council. But it's just something we just have not had time with our, our staff being so short, but it did not change. But we're trying to make it more in line with the other jurisdictions.
Okay, totally understand. I'm, I'm happy to hear that because it hasn't changed in a very long time. And I was wondering where we fell in line in comparisons. So I'm happy to hear that. So I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, how about Vice Mayor Lintel? Do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, and Councilperson Gagliotti?
No, no, I don't.
Uh, Councilperson Donaldson?
No, Mayor, no question.
Okay, um, I, um, I just want to um, thank Roberto and Jeff and um, Karen for all, and I'm sure Randy, for all of the work. It has been a year of tran, a great transition that was unexpected. Um, not only from the COVID perspective, but personnel leaving, I mean, critical uh, personnel leaving that handled these processes. And the, um, you know, just the amount, so not only that, but also we keep asking for more and more and more granularity. And I realize um, that that takes time. Um, but I also want to say that you did a great job. It's also a, uh, interesting transition from this current fiscal year to the next with, you know, our housing element grants that don't, that aren't reflected in the planning line. Um, so for anybody reading the budget for the first time, it's, it's confusing. And I think you did a really nice job um, explaining that. The American Rescue Plan, I look forward to the um, the council meeting where we get to decide how to spend that uh, one-time funds. The other thing, there was a, I want to make sure everybody's clear, the Parks District um, uh, contractor, uh, grant. It says that there was what, I don't know, twenty-five, thirty K that the city has to pay. And I just want to make sure all of our residents understand that that portion can be used to cover associated labor. So it's not something that we have to pay out. It, you know, it could very easily go against wrong's time to be able to research, implement, you know, whatever it is we come up with for that parks um, portion. And uh, fire contract expires in twenty twenty-two, so we'll have some negotiations next year. Um, and I am thrilled that the proposed budget includes recognition of um, Karen's work that she has been doing it under a very stressful time. She's taken on brand-new responsibilities on top of everything else. Um, I'm thrilled that Randy is now with us full-time. And um, I'm glad that we can give a little uh, recognition for our police officers. Um, and to be able to do that after a pandemic is uh, it is pretty amazing. So I just want to thank everybody involved that this is, this is no small feat. We have done a pretty darn good job uh, fiscally making it through this crazy time. Um, I also had the question about the fees in the true-up that got answered. Um, but for me, that's, those are, those are my comments. So thank you. Um, so let's go out to the public. Uh, Mr. Allion. We can't hear you.
I know. I had done it. Um, so I, I'm thrilled with all this. It's, it's all great news. Uh, there, there's that one problem though that keeps, I keep nagging at me. And that is that when we look at our cash balances, we don't look at our debt. And I'm not seeing the debt in there unless I miss something. Uh, and I think I've gone through this pretty thoroughly. I just don't see any discussion about how we're going to pay off that debt. And remember, there's, as you all know, there are two parts to that. There's a part where there is no interest accruing and there's a part where interest is accruing on the uh, failed development project out at Ford org. So did I miss it or are we not addressing that matter? We've got all this money sitting in the general fund. And I'd like to know what the council is thinking with regard to how do we address and pay off that loan? Do we just sit it there and let it accumulate until we take some positive action? just set it there and let it accumulate until we take some positive action to get a, uh, a developer on board that's going to do a responsible development of Ford Ork and he puts out the money and we pay off the debt? Or are we going to face up to the fact that we are spending money every year, um, on that debt? So there's, uh, on the interest on that debt, that interest I think is still accruing. So I'd like to know, I hope that you are having a discussion about this and that we will see a plan that says this is how we're going to pay off that debt. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ragstel Cronin.
Hi, Bill Ragstel Cronin over on Carlton again. Um, great budget. Looks good. Uh, the numbers look very promising. And again, coming out of a pandemic looks pretty awesome. Um, just a quick, I'd like to add something to the budget. I'm good at spending other people's money. Um, there's been a lot of talk tonight about the gay pride flag that was flown down at City Hall. I was there for the raising and I noticed our flag pole seemed kind of short. Um, I'd like to propose in the budget that we put in a bigger flag pole for the state mandated the state and federal flag and the city flag to fly on, a larger, taller pole if it's allowed because of the airport proximity. And I think it would be maybe out on the front lawn there. There, a nice big flag pole for the flags to fly on. And then we could use the old original short flag for the specialty flags, POW, MIA, gay pride, ad nauseam as we go on, as approved by the city council. Maybe that would help, um, calm some fears from people that don't like all these different flags and stuff because our flag pole's kind of short. Gay pride was down there pretty low. So just my two cents worth, I'd like to see maybe some money put in the budget for a new flag pole. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for, uh, constructive criticism. Uh, anyone else? Any other public comments? Okay, let's come back to the budget or let's come back to the council. Um, so Roberto, do you, um, did that help you, confuse you in, in how we wrap up this conversation?
No, it's, it's very clear. Um, the, so we're, we're looking for approval of all the resolutions that are there. Um, and then if you want, I can talk a little bit more about ARPA or I can talk about that now and then you can do your resolutions.
I, I think, uh, a discussion about ARPA would be very relevant.
Okay, uh, so let me, uh, share my screen one last time here. So, uh, today's discussion that I attended was put on by the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers, the Government Finance Officers Association, uh, co-sponsored by the League of California Cities because everybody has questions. How do we, what do we do with this money? So here's, here's what is allowed and we're going to be coming back with more on, on the use of that 370,000. It can be used to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts, which is something that a lot of agencies are taking into account, including assistance to households, small businesses and nonprofits or aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel and hospitality. So that, that's one possible use. The other one is to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers. Some agencies are taking that into account. Uh, here's what most are concentrating on, for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue due to the COVID-19 public health emergency relative to revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year prior to the emergency. That's a mouthful, but basically we get to take a look in the, um, 1819 was the last fiscal year before COVID-19 hit. So, uh, we have, uh, what everybody's wondering is how do you calculate that? And that's the session I was at today. Uh, just so you know, so when we come back, we will have gone through this exercise of going through the last few fiscal years, 15, 16, 16, 17, 17, 18, 18, 19, the last base year. Getting an idea how much the city has been collecting, how much did it collect now and how much does it expect? And where was there a decrease? And to the extent that there was a decrease, we can take some of that money and use it for public services. Uh, we can't use it unfortunately to pay off debt like the, uh, the one that's sitting on the books or to Calpers. But once we calculate that money, that money can then basically come into the general fund and be used to provide government services. That's where a lot of agencies are concentrating on trying to figure out how much money did we lost? Because pretty much every agency lost revenue due to that. And that money is basically free and clear to use for government services. Also that money, the 370,000 can be used to make necessary investments in water, sewer or broadband infrastructure. A lot of agencies are also concentrating on doing this. Uh, with regards to all of these, the thing to keep in mind, this is one-time money. Uh, the city's policies, fiscal policies, which we'll probably bring back for your review as we look at this. The policies call for using one-time revenues for one-time purposes, not to start using them for something that's going to be ongoing. And then, uh, you know, fiscal, you can't sustain that. So we're calculating first how much money was lost. So we know how much money the city could actually recoup from that. And then what are some of the allowable uses that the city could actually benefit from? Uh, and then the council can make a decision. Keep in mind, we don't have the full 370 to spend. We're going to get half of that. And that'll happen in July. So we'll, once the money comes in, we will, hopefully by the time the money comes in, we'll report back how much we actually came in and then consider the uses, make sure the money's in hand before we spend them. Uh, and there's a lot more to it, but you'll hear a lot more during the presentation. It's not as simple as it sounds here. And I don't know if you have any questions on ARPA. I'm sure everybody's heard a little bit about it.
Looks like, uh, Mr. Gagliotti does.
Yeah, I just want to know, and I'll say it in public, is how creative can we get with our accounting in terms of paying off debt in that? My understanding of the federal loan was just that. It was a loan for, for we, infrastructure that we needed to, to pay for. Um, can we take money, say out of the general fund or some other, one of, one of our special, one of our special, one of our other funds, pay off that debt and then take the, the, uh, the ARPA monies and replenish it into our, in our capital improvement fund or wherever, whatever fund we took to, to pay off that debt. And I'm asking it in open so that we can, rather than, I mean, how creative can we get with that?
Um, if I may, just a real quick responses, we can't get very creative. The federal government thought about a lot of these things that agencies may want to do. We cannot use the ARPA money to pay any existing debt. Uh, but what we can do is use the ARPA money for other like government services. And if you can save maybe a hundred thousand out of the general fund or 200,000, that money can be used for-
Understand. So it, that is, I mean, that's really kind of, I'm looking for a day to change like that. Is that can we basically take monies that, that are expended to pay off the debt? I mean, because that debt, just like, that, that's been chock, knowing it. I mean, I think everyone in the council has been knowing at us, you know, since, since we've been on here. But that, I mean, it, it certainly would be nice if we could really start to make some, you know, substantive moves towards paying some of that, that debt off. And here's this windfall of $400,000, you know, it just seems like, can we do it legally?
Yeah, well, we will come back with options to see what might be legally available.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
And, and I also think, uh, John, that there's going to be, you know, examples of bigger cities and how they're going to use it that we can also, uh, learn from.
Okay.
So, uh, but yeah, no, I think, uh, there will be a full discussion about that money.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah. So Roberto, we were still on you wrapping things up.
Okay, so, uh, the, uh, there is all the resolutions that are noticed in the staff report at the bottom that need to be approved. Approving the positions, approving the salary, approving the budget, the appropriations limit. I didn't go into discussing all of those, but basically, you know, they approve the number of positions in the city. The other one approves the salaries, effective like one. The appropriations limit goes back to Prop 13. There is no issue. The city's fine with the appropriations limit. Uh, all of these things are just necessary to make the budget work in this coming year.
Um, I, I'm sorry, did I go out to the public?
We did once, but, but maybe we need to go again.
Well, uh, let's go out to, uh, I mean, we don't necessarily need to go out, but there's Dennis.
Okay, I'm, I'm unmuted and, uh, thank you again. All right. So what, I, I, I think I objected to this when I was still on, on the city council and or maybe I waited until afterwards, but under your memberships and so on and payments to other organizations, I still don't know what it is that the Monterey Bay, what is it called? M, MBEP? Economic. It's not clear to me that we're, the city is getting $2,500 worth of benefit from that organization. Uh, we have other organizations that seem to benefit as equally as much, if not more. Uh, Dino gave me an explanation that I didn't fully understand, or it, it just didn't work out for me. So I'm, I just wish that you would take another look at that and say, why is it are we, the city of Delray Oaks giving that much money to MBEP? Um, I, I'm not sure how much Monterey is giving or Seaside, but at the time we were giving as much as they were. And I don't understand it. Maybe we got a reduced rate. Maybe they're giving $5,000 now and we're doing 2,500. But I don't get it. We, I don't see the benefit. There, I've done. I don't see the benefit. I think I reconsidered that one. Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Um, so let's come, any other public comment? Okay, let's come back to the council. Uh, are you guys ready to make a motion? Are you?
Just, just some comments and then make a motion maybe. Um, so what I want to point out, I mean, uh, we've been having a lot of discussions around development in, yeah, in the, when we have the city manager kind of going there, but I just want to point out one thing is that our budget is maintained, was balanced through this pandemic because we did three things. We, you know, we cut costs. We had an increase in revenue in our largest revenue generator, which is Safeway. Um, and then we, uh, and, and we had limited exposure to where I would say, uh, one of the, you know, to, to hospitality. Um, and in the latter two, I mean, we got lucky. I, I want to say, I, I don't want to diminish what the staff and everyone did. You see both, you know, uh, and C manager and Karen and, and everyone working together and Mayor, you too, in, in getting us through in the cost cutting side of it. I mean, it was hurtfully in and you guys pulled it off. But I don't want to diminish how lucky we got that we have a Safeway and that turned out to be one of the greatest, you know, that was a boon. And we were not exposed to hotels. That doesn't mean that we, and, and then I also want to say this too, is that those, that recovery will be similar to what it was, you know, uh, post kind of 2008 in, and going from 2008 to 2018 is that there was, there was a, a huge dip. And then it recovered and by 2010 and going into, you know, for the, the subsequent eight years after that, the recovery was even greater. We're not going to get that lift because we do not have that, that exposure. So because we don't have hospitality, we don't have a large portion of our revenues coming from TOT taxes, it mitigated our, 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 our loss, but we're also not going to get the lift when, when the recovery comes. And, and that's going to be greater. There's going to be a greater, and just because of pendulum and, and, and everything. So that, the point here is, is that we really do need, it's, it's not a dead horse, but it is something that I, it's, it's, it's a pattern that I've been beating for years. We have to diversify our revenue stream. Um, and we've got to increase that not only that diversity, we have to increase basically our tax dollars and, and that, that means development. I mean, we just have to basically say it and we have to start being honest with the community because there, 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 there's a, there's a chorus out there that says, no, we don't need development. We can push it out. We don't need it now, but we do. We, we need to start thinking about development because the moves that we make now aren't going to bear fruit for years. I mean, many, many years, five to eight years before we really start to see anything. And so we do need to start now. We do need to start, we do need to be entering into ENAs and talking to developers and, and, and really strongly considering what we're going to be doing on this land that's out in Ford Ork and, and managing some of that. And we need to do that for the next downturn, basically. We need to be, be, be prepared and to diversify our revenue streams. So that's, um, again, I don't want to diminish all the great work that you guys did. Yes, uh, we made it through very tumultuous time in our, in our, uh, we made it through better than, than others. But, and let's not, I mean, we can't sit back on our laurels and say, man, we made it. We don't, we don't have to worry about it. We, we do have to start preparing for the future. That's my comment.
Great. Um, any other counsel?
Yes, Mayor, I've got a couple of things to add to it. I appreciate all the members of the public hanging in there. I know that the budget is not the most exciting thing in the world, but it definitely is important. One of the things that Roberto mentioned, uh, specifically was the raises that we are going to give to Karen and Ron, I think are long overdue. And the fact that we're going to bring on Randy full time, I think is a very smart move. I agree with Councilmember Gagliotti that, you know, the money we have is really based on one-time payments and grant money in a lot of ways. And, and really it's not sustainable. Bottom line is we're going to need more revenue. And without getting into the weeds, what, what I'd like to do is kind of summarize for the public kind of what the, the budget looks like as it applies to revenue. And share with you that basically the top three revenue sources, which is pretty much 65% of our overall budget goes from these three places. The first is total sales tax, which we get about 1.2 million each year, and that's going to stay pretty steady next year. Number two is cannabis tax. We've had a decrease of over 50% year to year in our cannabis tax. It went from 630,000 down to about 300,000. And really it's because the easy money has been made. We were early in the business and we've benefited from that. But there's a lot of competition now and we're starting to feel it. And that's why we've seen that over 50% decrease. In addition to that, our number one cannabis business still owes us a quarter of a million dollars. And we haven't been able to receive that from them. The third source of revenue is our property tax, which pretty much stays, uh, uh, consistent throughout. And that's about a half a million dollars we get each year. Now going back to the sales tax, the add-on that the voters approved is by far the biggest revenue generator that we have. It contributes about 830,000 a year. Nearly three times the amount of our cannabis tax. But the, the problem with that is it cannot go any higher. We're already maxed out at the maximum rate that we can do. Now, in terms of the sales tax, our three biggest sources in our businesses is one, our food and drug category, which is Safeway. And Councilmember Gagliotti talked about that. Second is our restaurants, which includes Tarpees, Starbucks, Jack in the Box. And then the third is a fuel category, kind of gas station related, which is 7-Eleven and the car wash. And what I'll point out is that we have not had a new revenue source in over four years. Now, a little bit on the debt that was mentioned. That debt costs us $45,000 in interest alone. That's just interest that we have to pay. And it essentially negates the gains that we get from other revenue sources. To give you an example of that, our transient occupancy tax, which is really the only direct source of revenue that we have uh, for tourism and it's, you know, the Airbnb units that we have out there, they bring in about $40,000 a year. And our lease to our garden center is about 36. So the interest we pay on that basically negates one of those revenue sources that we have. To give you an appreciation for kind of the situation we're in, I, I try to use a, a, a personal finance type analogy in that you've got a large balance on a credit card and you're paying a significant amount of interest on it, but yet you have a savings account that's in the positive like we do. And you can use that to chip away at that balance on that credit card. So I hope that gives you a better perspective about our budget and, and I'll just leave you with two things. To, to go back to Councilmember Gagliotti's point, for our long-term prosperity in this city, we need to find new and- we need to find new and diversified revenue sources. And secondly, I think it's very important that we need to pay down that debt.
Okay, Vice Mayor Lintell?
I'm in total agreement with Councilmember Donaldson, and also Councilmember Gagliotti. They should both express my opinions and my desires, and the only way I can foresee any future for Delray Oaks. Thank you.
All right. Councilperson Shirley?
Well, I know the Finance Committee, we did talk about that debt. But I, you know, I agree, we should talk further about a plan for paying off that debt, so I'm with you on that. Diversifying our revenues, I totally agree with that as well, but again, I don't think there's anyone out there saying no development, or at least I haven't heard no development. I'm just saying, let's be thoughtful with our development and go through a few steps first, so we can make sure that we maximize our revenues when we do develop, and that we don't end up in litigation like we did before. So I think, I don't want you to mix up the idea of going slow with no development. Because I don't, you know, I'm not advocating no development. I'm advocating being thoughtful with our development, and looking at a general plan update, and really going to our residents to see what they want, because I think, you know, it's going to change, really change our city, and as we know, residents are going to want to give their voice to that, and so I think we need to give them that opportunity, so. But I'm really pleased with the budget. Roberto, again, thank you so much. I am also very pleased with the raises that our city staff will be getting, and I think it's well-earned, so thanks, everyone.
My only comments about kind of the whole development thing and funding. We've been in a hiring process for a city manager. And we need to get back on solid footing. And then we need to come together and talk about plans for the future. Of course, everyone wants to pay off the debt, and of course, everyone wants us to be as self-sufficient as possible. But I think that's another meeting, and you know, maybe bringing some experts in to help us with that as well. So on that, I'm, is there, it feels like we're ready for a motion?
I know that as presented.
I have, I have one question before we move forward. So within, within the budget, Roberto, we have 122,000 going to the Economic Uncertainty Reserve Fund. Now, just kind of talking about the debt, would it be possible to move that towards debt payment, and then when we receive our grant, our COVID relief grant, maybe start using that money in a similar way you described when you were talking with Councilmember Gagliotti, or addressing his question, to where we can then move that money into the general fund and use it for different line items?
Let me see how we can accomplish that, because the 122,000 that you're talking about, that's based on the surplus. So we're talking at the end of '21, '22. If the numbers do work out, and we have 272,000, then 122 would go to that surplus. So that's, for the future, I mean, we could budget the entire amount if you want, and there'd be no surplus. Or we could budget 122, and the surplus would only be 150,000 at the end of the year. If you don't mind, could we come back to you with a couple of options for paying down that debt? Now, it's very clear the council wants to pay that debt off. But for right now, because this is based on the plan that's in place, if it works out, we do have money in hand, we can come back with a plan. Just like we had a plan to pay down, well, to accumulate funds to pay off Calpers at 1.5 million. Maybe instead of paying that off, you may prefer to pay down this other 1.2 million.
I have a question then on that. So if we approve the budget tonight, it doesn't necessarily lock in where the expenditures are made. We're just basically approving the chunks of money?
Yes, it's just a plan. The council can make changes next month if you want.
So through, through the mayor, then, Scott, does that work for you? If, could we then, tonight, approve the budget, knowing full well that we would have another bite at the apple to come back and actually see if we can move some monies around for it? Because I support you 100% on that. I'd like to see that 122 goes straight to paying off the debt, but I don't want to tie up tonight's proceedings.
Right, and I don't, I don't either, so I have no problem moving forward. I only brought it up based on our conversations, that we look at some of those types of options.
Absolutely appreciate that. Thank you.
So, so we do have regular Finance Committee meetings, and we are talking about the end balance. And we know that things shift from, you know, June to February. I mean, we will definitely do a mid, a mid-year budget review and edits, and so it gives us time to have those conversations.
Excellent.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other comments before we, I ask Karen to do a roll call?
I just have a quick question. Maybe this is for Alex. Do we have to approve each of these resolutions separately, or is this just total, we're getting them all done in one fell swoop?
Great question.
Because they were presented all as one package, and a necessary part of the budget, you can go ahead and approve it all as one.
So I think Vice Marilyn
Yeah, go ahead. You're, I think you're asking the question.
Thank you. Vice Marilyn Tell, you had the motion. Do you understand what you're motioning for?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and you're comfortable moving all of them?
Yes, I am.
Okay, as am I. So Karen, please, a roll call vote.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lintell?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr?
Aye. So the budget and all of the related resolutions are approved unanimously. Thank you, Roberto, and Team Delray Oaks for all of the hard work getting us to this place. We're going to move on to staff reports and city manager report.
Mayor, thank you very much. I see we're coming up on three hours, so I will be very brief. The best news of the month is Karen's back. So she came back just in time to stop everything from falling apart, and getting the budget done, and moving us forward. So Karen, welcome back, and I'm glad you're here.
Thanks, Jeff.
A lot of my information is in the written report in the packet. I won't go over everything. We are still trying to catch up. This month has been hectic, and especially the last two weeks. So if you have requests, or you need things, just please be patient with staff as we catch up and do some housekeeping after this city council meeting. I'd like to point out that our police department for, I believe, the fourth year in a row has participated in a Special Olympics law enforcement torch run. I think that's the only four years we've ever done it, is the last four years. And they represented us well with our reserves and our regular-duty officers. And I'll just say, as we had in the summer months, everybody, please stay safe, and and I wish you all well, and council, I thank you for all the kind words for staff, and what we've done with this budget. It's appreciated.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll move on. The next item is mayor and council reports, which are all in, all written and in the packet. Number 11 is correspondence. The same, please, if you have a moment, take a look at the letters that come in. And now we will be moving on to a closed session. So anyone wishing to address the city council on this item may do so now. There will be a time limit of, again, no more than three minutes for each speaker. Action will be taken on matters brought up under this public comment period. It has to do with conference with legal counsel, initiation of litigation, one potential case. Any city or any public comments? Seeing none? On that note, you're welcome to stay on the line as we meet, and we will come out and report out. But if you do leave us, the next regular meeting is August 24 at 6:00 PM. I am guessing with everything going on in the city, we will have special, at least a special meeting between now and then. So on that, for those of you leaving, good night. All right, are we missing John Gagliotti?
Give him a second here.
He's not.
I don't see him.
And he had left the other room, so I think he got bumped off.
Okay, well, we still have a quorum, so we're okay. So, Mr. Lorca?
Thank you, Mayor. With respect to the one closed-session item, initiation of litigation, an update was provided to council, but no reportable action was taken.
Okay, thank you very much. So again, our next regular meeting date is Tuesday, August 24, 2021, at 6 o'clock. But keep an eye on the city website for any potential special meetings between now and then. On that, happy summer if we don't see you, and we are adjourned.
Good night.
Night, all.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night, Madam Mayor.